I'm a cancer survivor myself, but he's cured. We as a family are in remission. We are all healing from this disease. My son had diabetes, asthma, high blood pressure. We would not be here today. Chronic medical conditions require long-term treatment, vigilance, follow-up care, and sometimes medication to maintain a healthy and productive life. All require extensive patient and family education and support as they adjust to living with a chronic disease, especially fatal one. We all know the statistics are horrendous in our state currently. The lack of treatment that's available to those seeking it is huge. And the lack of resources when treatment is found. And even with health insurance, paying for treatment is a challenge. My family's story began six years ago. My son started using heroin, I'm sorry, marijuana, in middle school, and it was the opening of Pandora's Box for him. By the time he was a sophomore in high school, he was using opiates and cocaine. He's a brilliant young man whose potential could have allowed him to go on to college anywhere that he wanted to. But he was crippled by his disease. He overdosed at 16, tried outpatient treatment without success, and went to his first inpatient treatment center a week after he turned 17 because there was no treatment available for my son in this state. He ended up going to Minneapolis, Minnesota, at Hazleton. From there, he was in a halfway house in Montana for 10 months. He finally came home and graduated from the fourth high school he'd attended in four years. He graduated complacently, which was a miracle. No one holds their child for the first time and wishes this disease be a part of their life experience, and yet we are a stronger family for living with it. He relapsed shortly after graduation. He had become complacent and was not utilizing the tools he had to maintain his recovery. He found himself in jail with an OUI once again. We faced the challenge of finding treatment for him. There was no treatment available in Maine. So he ended up at the Fleming House in New Hampshire and was now living in a sober halfway house here in Portland. He works full-time. He supports himself and celebrated six months, two days ago. Throughout the last three years, I spent countless hours fighting with Anthem over payment for every single bill related to his illness. We spent tens of thousands of dollars of our own money in the process as well because some facilities were not even taken in charge due to the cost associated with seeking reimbursement. After 18 months, two appeals and an extra review, Anthem finally paid for his first round of treatment in Minnesota. It was exhausting, emotionally draining, and humiliating as a member of the medical profession to bear witness to what I know is not just our family's experience. The trauma of loving an advocate at times pales to the pain inflicted by advocating for my son. I beseech you to put aside the politics that have muddied this issue beyond recognition. We are all human beings, family and community members, long before we are Democrats or Republicans. If your child were in my son's shoes, or your spouse, or your sibling, or your parent, you would not be looking at party lines. I can assure you without any doubt in my heart that you would desperately be searching for answers, help, and support. We need to pull together. We are losing lives daily in this quagmire. Please look for evidence-based research. Listen to your hearts and ask questions. I'm happy to share my story, as are many of those in this room. We are not ashamed. We're loving people faced with a chronic disease that is right now almost impossible to treat here at home in Maine. The needs are vast, but not impossible. We have seen that with compassion and financial support, we can help addicts and their families find the treatment that they need. Operation Hope, the Family Restored, and similar programs in Massachusetts are but a few shining examples of how collaborating our efforts can be powerful in combating this disease. Thank you for your time. Thank you for putting aside your politics, and hopefully for seeing this issue for whatever it is. It's a chronic condition. It's a medical diagnosis. It's a problem that's shared by all of us, not just the addicts themselves. I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for telling us your story. Questions, anyone? Representative Tonto.
Thank you very much for being here today. I'm wondering if we could get a copy of your testimony. Would that be possible? We would like very much to have that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all being here today. I know many of the people here.
Does that mic light up?
Sorry.
There we go. Thank you.
How's that?
Much better.
I don't just want to take the time to thank you guys for being here today and listening to this. I also want to thank everybody for their testimony, specifically Tatyana and Matthew Brown. This is not an easy thing to do. This is not an easy thing to do, stand up here and speak to a group of highly influential policymakers and policy enforcers pleading a case that has been being pled over and over and over while people like me are suffering and dying. And that's the bottom line, is that it's our friends and neighbors. I myself am a senior at the University of Southern Maine, studying chemistry, minoring in mathematics and leadership in organizational studies, something that still takes me, when I say it aloud. I cannot believe the power of possibility that rests within recovery, because I'm also a person long-term recovery, coming up with four years in Maine sober, completely absent. And it is really not without resources and support that I've been able to attain abstinence and sobriety and recovery. I see this time and time and time again, people who really are fighting for it, but they can only fight for so long without resources. You see this over and over again in the drug war. And if I may go back in history, the Roman Emperor Caligula decided to take it upon himself to battle Neptune. And he marched his armies to the shore of the ocean, where he had them charged and slashed with their weapons, and poke and stab. And as he did, or as they did, the water kind of moved out of the way and then collapsed back upon them. They collected some seashells. They collected some objects and marched back into Rome triumphantly. See what we did? We defeated Neptune. And I'm not saying that it's wrong of enforcement to continue the way it has, because arrests do need to be made. And seizures like the one in Oxford County, 18 pounds of heroin does need to be off the street, definitely. But what we are battling here is an addiction problem, not a drug problem. And it is combined joint efforts, such as the pari initiatives, that take enforcement and people in recovery and the general community who are experiencing this community illness called addiction, this human condition that 10% of Mainers experience. Guns are now actually safer than opiates, for the record. Not only do car crashes kill less people, but guns kill less people nationally now. And it's efforts like young people in recovery that are really seeing this as a community illness and trying to treat the community where everybody lives. We are all in this together already. Let us join forces and efforts to treat this community illness together. This is not a red, this is not a blue issue. This is not a high rent, low rent. This is a human condition. And we can come together, not as, you know, good people in enforcement and bad people as, you know, drug dealers. We can all come together as humans, as people who want to treat this, who want to help this issue. And my testimony, as you'll see, I wrote up as neither, neither for nor against. And I did that for the specific reason because I thought this was broken up into two testimonies. And so the $100,000 over the course of two years for the entire state of Maine's pari and lead and lead-style initiatives is not nearly enough. I am all for more enforcement, but let us all, you know, treat this issue with parity across the board. I'm not saying that these departments need $2.4 million to start lead programs or start pari or operational subprograms. But these programs are so effective because it takes all of the community and has them work together. And so I'm very much in favor of the entire bill as it's written, but I would love to see more funds set aside for the pari and lead. So thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Well done from the heart.
Thank you.
Senator Justus.
Thank you. Again, welcome. Thanks for coming in. I have only one question. On your recovery, what is your other choice?
It's heroin, heroin and cocaine. Shooting five or six rounds of heroin a day, smoking, shooting a half ounce of cocaine every two days.
Thank you very much.
Representative Tonto. Thank you very much. Thanks very much for being here. I really appreciate your perspective. My question is really, how did you get into treatment? Was it because you had insurance? Or did someone refer you? Or was it healthcare provider? How did you get off the track of being a user and get off the track of being someone who's starting to recover?
Thank you for asking that question. I did not face any consequences through enforcement. I came to a place where I was willing to ask for help. And that is what I see is the giant crack. So many people are asking for help, and there's nothing for them when they're asking. But when I asked, and it was a call to my mother, I was like, Mom, I don't know what to do anymore. And she was like, well, let's go get you some help. You want to help? You got to start calling detoxes. And fortunately, I was in Massachusetts, where there are a lot more resources available. I did not have health insurance. I went through a number of times on free care until I got mass health, and then wound up having to pay out of pocket for a private treatment, extended treatment. Thank you.
Any further? Thank you. Well, like I said, welcome.
Hello, members of the committee. Thank you for having me today. My name is Dawson Julia, resident in China, Maine. I don't have personal experience with old kids or anything, but I've met quite a few people in the past year and a half, two years that have suffered, fighting an addiction of some sort. I'm a medical area one caregiver. I moved my business from my home in China to Unity Maine, and this is the reason why I need known social addicts. They're coming to me looking for a way to remedy their addiction. So I wanted to share with you some of the things that I've discovered, through my findings, and in the last few years. Since I moved to Waldo County, I've met moral addicts that I care to expose. It's alarming, right? I've always been led to believe that junkies were created on the street. One thing I heard nobody asking this pity is, how did you start your addiction? How did you start taking opiates? I've always heard everybody say, how did you finish it off? How did you kill it? But to be truthful, I haven't found one person who found their addiction on the street. That was always my belief until I started to meet these people. It's a very inaccurate belief. Every single individual I've met has found their addiction from their doctor's office. Most of them will tell you they broke their back, they got in a car accident, they have a really debilitating disease, and they're required to use opiates as a method to treat their pain. So that's kind of alarming, and that's kind of sad. Most people are good decent people. They want to work. They want to be successful. Most of them have low income. Most of them get little support from their family. They don't have a strong family system. If we look at the CDC, they categorize addiction as a disease. If you look at law enforcement, they criminalize that disease to some extent to the patient. How do we win with this plan? If we're going to just throw people in jail for a disease they have? We've got to have to use our brains, I think is what we need to do. So what I've been finding is that patients who have been on these opiates for years and years and years eventually get cut off from their doctors. They're forced to go on a detox on their own, which is horrible, as I understand. They have to deal with this incredible pain that they've had all their life with no painkiller. And most of some resort to the street to find something, something to relieve this horrible situation they're in. The street doesn't always have what they're looking for, so they end up doing substitute drugs, examples coke, heroin, the crystal meth baths all, it's all this crazy stuff that we're hearing about. And so from my perspective, we're breeding this disease. We're breeding it. Every day that somebody goes to the doctor's office and gets a new prescription for opiates, we don't know what the outcome is going to be, but it's safe to say that there's a good chance that if they stay on those opiates for a long period of time, they could be on the street with their drugs someday. And like other people testify, it's not just the 25-year-olds. It's the 80-year-olds. It's the, you know, the kids. Let's take, for example, I just read the story, the FDA is now allowing 11-year-olds to have opiates in this country. Why aren't we, as a government, saying not in Maine? Maybe that's a bill we should propose. You guys can do that in the other four United States, but in Maine, we're not doing this 11-year-old crap. I think we need to use our heads, and we need to figure out where the root of this problem is coming from and eliminate it from there. If we had a mosquito problem in Maine that we wanted to eradicate, would we say, let's go buy a bunch of fly swatters? And when that doesn't work, let's just buy more fly swatters? Or would we hire some scientists to figure out how to make these mosquitoes infertile from being able to breed? I think that would be the approach. It would be most effective. So, you know, I recommend that we step back, stop looking at things. This foreign drug has been going on since 1971. We're essentially doubling down. I guess another term is so. But I would recommend, I'm not in favor of this bill. That's a fantastic proposal.
Thank you, Dawson. Questions from the committees? Good, thank you. Garrett Corbin.
Good afternoon, Senator Amber, Representative Roboto, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, members of the appropriations in the Financial Affairs Committee and members of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. My name is Garrett Corbin, testifying in support of bill date 1537 on behalf of the Maine Municipal Association. Based on what we have heard, similar comments that you have heard today of the need for more help from the state dealing with this problem. So this legislation definitely offers a step in the right direction. Just specifically for this bill, the feedback we got primarily was for the funding to follow the need that is so for the funding to be distributed based on evidence of need. There was some interest in that. There was also interest in helping with a timely response, particularly in terms of bed space, detox bed space, lack thereof, and also the need to facilitate or be able to treat mental illness alongside with these drug issues. So I'll leave it there and welcome any questions you can have.
Questions, anyone? Representative Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Corbin, you're the first one who explicitly brought up the issue of mental health treatment issues. And it's been, my understanding, for a long time that untreated mental health issues and co-occurring disorders are a really critical piece of this, and no one's talked about it. So because you brought it up and your members are asking us to address it, could you, for the work session, provide us with documents that back up why people in the Maine Municipal Association think this is so critical?
I'd be happy to try to get some more information on that. That was, you know, just a general request. So I'll see if I can get more information based on that, but I don't have it.
Well, I'm just putting that out there too. I'm guessing there's some people coming behind you that might have some things to say about that. But clearly, if you're making it a priority in your family, then it has to be your duty for it. So that's why I asked you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that you've come out of the water very much. My name is Janice Cooper. I am a resident of Yarmouth, should be God among the long. And I'm pleased to have this opportunity to receive a mailer, 2599. Measure whose title and act to combat drug addiction through enforcement, treatment, and recovery says everything we must do. The state of Maine is facing rapidly escalating and deadly scourge of drug abuse, particularly opiates. A town, or a village, or a city in our state is untouched by this development. And the question is when and how much we will do. I will leave it to others to present more expert opinions on these subjects. The role today is simply to introduce you to one of my constituents, Dr. Mary Dowd and her associate, Mel Fowler, who is particularly expert on these issues. She is knowledgeable and passionate about what it takes for treatment of addiction to be effective as anyone you will hear today. Until a few years ago, she was a family practitioner in Yarmouth, sore throats, sprained muscles, sometimes more serious, bites. Then she started moonlighting in a primary care unit for prisoners at the Cumberland County Jail. As she said, addiction was in my face every time I was there. The reason almost everyone was there was because of a crime related to addiction. What intrigued her most was that none of them wanted to use the M, yet they knew they would be powerless not to as soon as they were released. As her addiction practice expanded beyond the jail, she began to understand how widespread and indiscriminate this plague is. Rich, poor, minority, white, urban, rural. And she has seen the lot. For the last eight years, she has worked as a medical director at the Milestone Foundation and treated addicts at the foundation's detox community in Old Orchard Beach. She also worked for Catholic charities at Discovery House, and before the Mercy Recovery Center closed, she worked there. She knows the scene. She knows the people, and she knows what works. And certainly, she knows what doesn't. She's also a very frustrated woman. Not one in Maine, not anyone in Maine is ignorant about this problem. Yet resources committed to keeping addicts clean are shrinking. Despite her knowledge and skills, she is powerless to help most of the people who come to her. But I would rather let you hear this story from her, so I am pleased to present Dr. Mary Dowd of Yarmouth. Thank you.
And the doctor will have to hold on because we're still dealing with the criminal justice portion of this bill, but at a deference to a fellow legislator. So she can fill out this document.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Cooper? Representative Dunn. Thank you. Chick, it's time.
Thank you very much, Senator Amber, Representative Tonto. I got Representative, Senator Rosen. I'm sorry. And my good friend, Representative Warby. I'm here today because I don't want you people to forget. There are veterans in the state of Maine who suffer from drug problems. VA doesn't take care of them the way they should. I'm the point man today. I'm here to let you know that we are going to be coming here for all of these drug-related legislation problems. We will testify to what's going on in our state. If I may, to say, oh, it's a veteran, go to the VA. When a veteran hears that, this is one of our service magazines. VA healthcare is broken. VA Secretary Walt McDonald agreed with many of the findings of the report that says VA is undergoing a radical transformation. Show me a young veteran who has a problem with drug addiction, and tell them to go to the VA after reading something like this. I have been a service officer, a certified service officer in the state of Maine for over 30 years. I've had the opportunity to sit down and talk with these people time and time again. Started back in 1970 with marijuana. Then I went to sniffing, blue sniffing. Went on and on. But today, I never heard a word When you can't get enough satisfaction on a drug, you turn to alcohol. And then when alcohol doesn't work, then you go to the heavy stuff. Again, Secretary McDonald made a statement. You can't treat drug treatments with a pill. You need a human resource. What we need in Maine is more treatment centers. We need a place for people to go to get some kind of treatment. Get off this methadone, which in my opinion is a problem anyway. So I ask you, I brought some stuff with me. If a veteran is homeless and he goes to apply for a veteran's home, first question they ask him, have you been clean and sober for 30 days? What if he says, yeah, no? Out on the street he goes. We have women veterans in the state of Maine. The Women's Trauma Recovery Program, located in Talalalta, California. There are four of them for traumatic PTSD problems with women. In Boston, Massachusetts, Frackville, Ohio, Amarillo, California, and New Orleans, we have Louisiana. So where do our female veterans in Maine go? Right now, ladies and gentlemen, our veterans have tailored upon themselves. They have their own meetings to try to repress this problem. The ravages of war